You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 17th, 2024 special meeting of the LaPorte County Election Board. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Call this meeting to order LaPorte County Election Board, May 17th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call Teresa Massa.
Here.
Heather Stevens.
Here.
And Brody Schaffner, we have a quorum. Any corrections to the agenda?
Um, just that you guys have already approved the March 8th minutes. So it'll just be the March 22nd minutes.
Okay. I have a motion to take the March 8th minutes approval off the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Also, um, I, it's part of certifying the election, so we do need to go over any provisional ballots. So we could add that under new business.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Provisional. Any corrections to the March 22nd, 2024 minutes?
I see no corrections necessary.
Can I move to approve?
I move to approve.
Alright, I will second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved, public comment?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Tim Stables, 1501 Michigan Avenue. As you also know, I'm the auditor of LaPorte County. And was a candidate for county commissioner on the Republican ballot this primary. I understand from talking to other people who were on the Republican ballot, uh, that they have, uh, that one or more have notified you about, um, the anonymous mailer that went out, uh, and came out really later part of the week before the election. Um, and I wanted to discuss it in person with you, I didn't have time to write anything, so I thought I'd come before the election board. This was a barrage against upwards of a dozen people. There was no disclosure about, um, where it came from. Um, it is my belief that it came from an elected official at the highest levels of LaPorte County government. Is a direct assault on the rule of law and the sanctity of our elections. I know a number of people that received this piece, so the notion that it would have an exemption for the 100 or less quantity of mailings such that a disclaimer would not be required would be preposterous. There are blatant falsehoods in the piece. And as I said, it attacks a dozen or more different public officials or public servants. I would just say to you that, um, with, with my greatest respect, uh, you must act, um, to investigate this because if you don't, it's open season on candidates. And the type of thing where someone, uh, mails out something anonymously, if they believe they can get away with it, um, and there's no consequences, or at least in an effort to investigate, it will be the wild, wild west in LaPorte County. Um, and our process will be corrupted and has been corrupted and adulterated. Um, fortunately, in my case, um, the size of my defeat would not frankly be attributable exclusively to the, uh, to that mailer. Uh, in my opinion, that's neither here nor there. As I said, it would be open season on candidates, but also open season on getting away with not making required disclosure by the simple act of hiding things from the election board. I commend you for acting in a way over the last several months to show, um, those running for election that you do have a mandate, you do have teeth, and that you'll be perhaps firm but fair. Uh, and restoring an aspect of the rule of law and, and proper oversight to candidates and candidacies. Uh, so I, I would urge an investigation of this matter, uh, which again, as I said earlier, is a direct assault on the rule of law and the sanctity of our elections, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. Some of the stuff Tim just got done speaking about, I also agree with him. Um, I look at it more on social media, especially Facebook. Um, we have these people putting out negative stuff about candidates that are outright lies. Um, they, we know the reason why they don't use their real name because they don't want to be sued. I hear, Mr. Schaffner, you continue to talk about subpoena power. It's time to start subpoenaing Facebook when you start seeing these aliases, these people that keep harassing people. Every campaign that I've ran, I've, I've been attacked many times. I can, I can put up with it. I can put up with it, it's no big deal, but when my kids start seeing certain things and listening to or reading the lies and stuff, it kind of gets to you and it does affect our elections. I, I know we're not in Russia, we're in America. And it's something that you can do and you should do the best you can do to, to, um, drop the hammer on these individuals who wants to hide behind fake posts or fake pages or fake profiles. It needs to come to an end. Or else we are, it's going to be the same old thing over and over and over again. And I'm, I think most of the people in this county are tired of it. Some of the bashing that, that goes on, I mean, being a public servant isn't for everybody. Tim, myself, other people, a lot of people criticize us. We got, we have to take that criticism. So I, I just hope that this board, because you guys have done a great job. You guys coming together, you have done a lot of things in this county. And we need to put an end to this, these people using anonymous names and all that stuff. And when we do find them, find out who they are, we need to prosecute them. If we can prosecute them criminally, we need to do it. We can't keep putting up with that. And my last thing I would like to talk about, I, there's a lot of candidates. And I want to thank all the candidates for running, everybody, because it takes a lot to do this, it takes a lot to run and go door to door and meet people. Sadly, we have candidates who don't live in the districts they, they run in. We have people who don't even live in the city that they sit on boards. We need to do, we need to crack down on that. We need to work with another agency or something to, to verify that. We need to work together in this department to make sure that we get those people that are not living in our cities or our counties, who's running for office, that's making a mockery out of our, our, out of our election process, so. Um, with that being said, I just want to thank you guys for, um, educating us, um, Lord knows I made a lot of mistakes, if it wasn't for Taylor, I'd be, I, I would never try to run again. You go into the clerk's office, um, I just remember the past, it was not friendly. And now it's like, they're willing to do everything they can to help you. And, and, um, the goal is, I guess, is to get more people to come out and vote. We haven't done well so far, but we'll figure out a solution and hopefully the negativity is probably what's making everybody not want to participate in our system. Sadly, you know, anybody, everybody has a right to run, but, um, Ms. Stevens, I just want to thank you for doing what you're doing. And Brody, I, I thank you kind of hard on people at times, but it's needed. It's needed, uh, but please, when I come back before this board, don't be hard on me, on my violation, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Ella Bilderbeck, LaPorte County Recorder. Uh, just a quick touch up on that, what I call the hate mail. Having been, you know, included in it and, you know, seeing the lies about myself and basically insults. Um, it's not easy to take it and when you run for office, I guess you have to have a very thick skin. And I was able to look at it and see it for what it is, lies and untruths, and so I was able to sleep just fine at night. However, the question I have, when you look at the envelopes, it shows that it was processed in facility in Illinois, which means that let across state lines. Which begs the question, I don't know the law, does this mean that whoever did this also broke a federal law? And if caught, could they be prosecuted under the federal law? And I'm hoping that whoever it is will trip up, open their mouth at the wrong time with the wrong person and will find out who it is and that they will be prosecuted because this is not how it should be. You know, I understand attacks of certain sorts, you know, your credibility can be attached to it. But to, the outright lies is just wrong, you know? If, if somebody says, oh, you know, so and so is not doing this or that, fine, you know, I get it. They want to make themselves look better, but this was just not right. Uh, it was dirty, underhanded, and the fact that they didn't have the guts to even put their name on it tells me what kind of cowards they are. So, um, that's all I have and thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, Mike Schultz, I'm the interim Democratic Party Chairman. At least probably five o'clock today when I resign, but anyway. But, um, my question is on Election Day, I was at a voting booth that had the box in at the tower that you could see it printing. Cause I think not all of them have it yet, but general they will. Could you explain, when I go in and I scan my license and then that's assigned a number? Or what number are they putting in the machine when I'm, I'm voting?
Did you vote early?
No, I went in Cool Spring Township Fire Department.
Then there, there's no number required.
So they just put either a, uh, put a D or an R card in there so it knows?
So they, they'll put in, they'll put in what's called a vote card. And then it's going to pull, it's going to pull up every, so because we've gone to vote centers, every single ballot for every single precinct is on every single machine. So that's what they're selecting, they're selecting your precinct so that you are voting for the proper, for the proper candidates for your area.
Okay, um, and then, so there is no number that would generate from there over to the printed?
No.
Okay.
No.
But is my name on the printed ballot?
No.
Okay.
You're talking about within the VV pad, the box that's attached? Your name is not on that. Your name is on the ticket that, that the poll pad printer issues.
Right.
Your, that has your name, it has your precinct, that does have your information. And that way, again, the judge knows which ballot you, you are to get.
So at the end of the day, if there's ever a challenge, basically just saying, we had, uh, 500 scan license and we had 500 votes.
Yes.
Basically that.
And we have 500 of those tickets.
Okay, so that's basically because there were questions of me, what, what was it doing and, you know? And I said, I don't know, I'm new to that, so, but that answers that. The other thing, the scanner, does that act as the poll book basically at that precinct?
Yes.
So can reports be ran during the day, like we used to pick up poll books?
Yes.
And did you run any reports during the day?
I ran them for both parties, in fact, they were sent, um, Indiana Dems called and the Indiana GOP called, so they were sent reports.
Any locals request?
Uh, Justin Keel requested. That's, and I, I think that that's it.
And, and so is that how we knew at the end of the day, how many crossovers we suspected there were?
I wouldn't know that. What they can, anything done with that data outside of my office is outside of my office, I simply run a report, but I don't know.
So, okay.
That's, that's the best answer that I can give you.
So would they have access to the most current voter registration of the, the, the people that had voted DNR, would this been something previous?
Well, I don't know if they would be working with the, with the Indiana State Parties through, I think it's GOP Data Center, and I'm not sure what the one for the Democrat Party is. So I don't know if they're pulling data from there. But that I, I don't know, getting a, an 866 call, I'm sure it's important.
So, yeah, the main thing was, you know, people were kind of confused because they, they thought they saw a number and then they thought that number was assigned to that ballot.
No.
And I, I said, well, I didn't look at mine that closely as it was tabulating.
Well, and the interesting thing that we found during the public test last year was there is a QR code, so I was curious, like what is on that QR, that QR code? So during the public test, we actually scanned it, um, with our phones and it was like this crazy little dancing guy that came up. So, it was nothing, so I, I don't, I don't know what that is.
And who has access to that box at the end of the day?
Those, I, we do not touch those, um, they are stored in the elections room and only my ProVote handles those. What they'll do is they will take all of the papers out. Um, we keep, I keep a spreadsheet that has where, where each machine is going, what VV pad is with it, what, um, what poll pad is with it, what hotspot is with it, so that we know where all of the equipment is. So that if something's missing, we know where it was. And, and from there, those would just be stored. But I, my understanding is that we are to have one on every single machine in the general election in case there's ever a question, because you do hear, you do hear people that don't trust the electronic voting machines. So this, this is just a paper trail that shows us that our voting machines are doing exactly what they're showing us that they're doing.
Is that paper trail then only accessible if there's a challenge?
I believe so, yeah, that's not something that would be handed out.
And as, as far as the post office, most of our mail goes to Carroll Stream, Illinois anymore.
Yes.
Bypasses Gary altogether, so that's why that envelope, I had a friend that got one, he was a Republican. I didn't get one, so, but it had, I believe Carroll Stream on it. And that's where just about probably 95% of our mail goes.
Thank you. Sure.
I voted, I voted this year, um, I was coming back from Ball State on Election Day and I went to, uh, Wantata, um, I hope I'm saying it right, Town Hall. And whoever those young ladies or the ladies that was there, um, they were very friendly and again, it was awesome to come over to LaPorte to vote as opposed to Michigan City. I wish we can get those people in our city, but yes, those people, those women did a great job and I had a great time over there, so I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on Zoom? Going once, going twice. Closed, public comment is now closed, moving on to new business, certification of the 2024 primary election. Is this separated into the parties?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, right there.
So the, okay, there's a lot of Republicans.
Yeah.
Okay, so starting with the Republican.
I'm sorry, excuse me, do we need to deal with provisional first?
Oh, yes, thank you Teresa.
Yes.
So we only had one.
Okay.
And Taylor, did that person appear to show their, to, to present their ID?
They did not. And they had until noon today, correct?
And for the record, it is now 12:47? Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that that not be counted.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
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 I do have another question about provisional ballots.
Yes.
For the handful of absentee ballots that we processed on Election Day in the courthouse that had signature issues, are those considered provisional ballots? So my understanding is that they should have been sent forms, uh, ABS 18A for unsigned and ABS 18B for mismatched signatures.
Yes, those would have come in, they, those were sent out before we ever received anything, before, before that box was ever opened. Does that make sense, if they hadn't signed?
Okay, there, I think there was one that came in on that day that hadn't been signed.
Do you know, did, did you read, did you send them anything?
So, um, early voting, sent them out, there was some misunderstanding because one of the people thought they had to send them the same form that the provisional ballot receives to be filled out, but it's not, it's the one that's missing the signature. And so instead of making them come in, which a lot of them get them by mail because they cannot come in or go vote, um, they can sign that form and that is counting as their ballot signature. Basically, they're swearing on an affidavit that they completed, they just didn't sign. And as long as we got that, I attached it to any absentee ballots that we got.
Correct.
And I believe one did come in, but we handed it in, everything that we got was handed in and attached with the ballot.
So on Election Day, there was one that was not signed?
I think one that was delivered that day was not.
Oh, well then, they're S O L.
Well, okay, that's, that's not my understanding of.
No, I think that they would, yeah, they would receive, we would send that out still and they have X amount of time.
Yeah, I know, we sent one out for the missing signature because Dierlin told me which one to print and they have not returned anything.
Okay, how about the mismatched, I think there was one or two mismatched.
You didn't give me the names of those people, so you guys took them back down to the room.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll figure that out, this, this is no way would affect any totals of the votes, but we, we need to.
Yeah, but once I.
Be careful on this for the.
Once I checked them, then they were taken away from me, so I don't know what happened with them after that.
So we need to make sure that those are brought back to you.
Yes.
In the future.
Right, great, okay, thanks. And then the ones that were rejected because they were late, I did send them a letter. I'm not required, but I did send them a letter letting them know that their ballot was received and the date that it was received compared to the date that it was due.
Right, great. Alright, thank you Taylor.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. I am going to possibly butcher some names. If in the future you win the election and you want me to pronounce it correctly, please send me a phonetic spelling, thank you. First, I'm going to use the, I'm going to do the Republican ballot. President of the United States, Donald Trump. United States Senator, Jim Banks. Governor, Mike Braun. Uh, US Representative District 1, Randy Niemeyer. Representative District 2 for the US, Rudy Yakum. State Senator District 8, Mike Bahatchik. State Representative District 7, Jake Tezchka. State Representative District 09, no candidate filed. State Representative District 20, Jim Pressel. Circuit Court Judge, 32nd Circuit, Julianne Havens. Circuit Court Clerk, Heather Stevens. County Auditor, Mike Rosenbaum. County Recorder, Elsbieta Ella Bilderbeck. County Treasurer, Dan Barini. County Coroner, Lynn Swanson. County Surveyor, John Mattwischen. County Commissioner District 2, Steve Hollifield. County Commissioner District 3, Joe Haney. County Council Member at Large, Brett H. Kessler, Adam Karanka and Heather Oak. Precinct Committeeman Cass, Tricia Rosenbaum. Precinct Committeeman Center 2, Lisa Pierce Akowski. Precinct Committeeman Clinton, Ralph H. Malecki. Precinct Committeeman Cool Spring 1, Ross Craig Hinchman. Precinct Committeeman Cool Spring 3, Francine Kalita. Precinct Committeeman Dewey, R. James Shealy. Precinct Committeeman Galena 2, Don Josbyak. Precinct Committeeman Hannah, Alan Stevens. Precinct Committeeman Hudson, Joel E. Basil. Oops, sorry. Precinct Committeeman Kankakee 1, Becky Pressel. Precinct Committeeman Kankakee 2, Kevin Wheatbrook. Precinct Committeeman Kingsford Heights, Coral L. Lawn. Precinct Committeeman Lacrosse, Justin Keel. Precinct Committeeman Lincoln, Steve Hollifield. Precinct Committeeman Long Beach, Fred P. Woods. Precinct Committeeman LP 25, Daniel Wiltsey. Precinct Committeeman LP 26, Michael Pollan. Precinct Committeeman LP 27, Mike Connor. Precinct Committeeman LP 28, Kevin L. Algrim. Precinct Committeeman LP 29, Mitch Ficus. Precinct Committeeman LP 30, Brett Ben Versey. Precinct Committeeman LP 31, Stephen Perthah. Precinct Committeeman LP 32, Elsbieta Ella Bilderbeck. Precinct Committeeman LP 33, Tim Frankie. Precinct Committeeman LP 34, Mike Rosenbaum. Precinct Committeeman LP 36, Danny Streeter. Precinct Committeeman LP 38, Roger Galloway. Precinct Committeeman LP 40, Brett Parks. Precinct Committeeman LP 41, Laura Koneschny. Precinct Committeeman LP 43, Larry Pinkerton. Precinct Committeeman MCO 1, Connie Grammer Rosa. Precinct Committeeman MCO 2, Diane Borowski. Precinct Committeeman MCO 3, Ian Osborne. Precinct Committeeman MCO 4, David LaShudo. Precinct Committeeman MCO 6, Deb Vance. Precinct Committeeman MC 12, Diane Gonzalez. Precinct Committeeman MC 19, Jill Skonejzeni. I'm sure I butchered that one, Precinct Committeeman MC 20, Rex Bailey. Precinct Committeeman MC 22, Dan Granquist. Precinct Committeeman MC 23, Ray Maloney. Precinct Committeeman Masina Shores 02, Mike Bahatchik. Precinct Committeeman New Durham 01, Mark Parkman. Precinct Committeeman New Durham 02, Thomas Pfath. Precinct Committeeman Noble, Dave Depping. Precinct Committeeman Pleasant, Michelle Bonick. Alright, so the rest of these, until I say otherwise, are precinct committeemen. Uh, Pleasant, I'm sorry, Pleasant is Michelle Bonick. Potawatomi Park, Richard W. Warnhoff. Prairie, Kristen Zabel. Cipio 1, Kalen Ludlow Deckard. Cipio 2, Joe Haney. Springfield 01, Corey Kirkham. Springfield 02, Richard Lee Litkey. Trail Creek 01, Janice L. Blake. Trail Creek 02, William Newton. Union, Rita Beatty, Beatty. Uh, Wantata 01, Marlene Mitsner. Wantata 02, Gregory Archie Howard. Westville, Stephanie Jones. Wills, Russell Oak. State Convention Delegate at Large, Elsbieta Ella Bilderbeck, Mitch Ficus, Rhonda Graves, Sharon Kirkham, Adam Karanka, Bonnie Miller, Duane Miller, Heather Oak, Becky Pressle and Jim Pressle. And State Convention Delegate at Large, District 1. Uh, Elizabeth Liz Bergeron, Mike Bahatchik, Diane Borowski, Carol Ficus, Carol Granquist, Dan Granquist, Carrie Kirkham, Lisa Pierce Akowski, Mike Rosenbaum, Deb Vance and Patrick Vance. And State Convention Delegate, District 2, George Bullhurst, Michelle Bonick, Chris Cleveland, Mike Connor, Coral Lawn, Ralph Malecki, Brett Parks, Ron Schaefer, Suzanne Schaefer and Kristen Zabel. On the Democrat ballot, President of the United States, Joseph R. Biden Jr. United States Senator, Valerie McCray. Governor, Jennifer McCormick. US Representative District 1, Frank Murvan. US Representative District 2, Lori Camp. State Senator District 8, Leon P. Smith. State Representative District 7, no candidate filed. State Representative District 9, Pat Boy. State Representative District 20, no candidate filed. Circuit Court Judge, 32nd Circuit, no candidate filed. Circuit Court Clerk, Angela Hensman. County Auditor, no candidate filed. County Recorder, no candidate filed. County Treasurer, Joey Winski. County Coroner, Mark P. Baker. County Surveyor, Tony Hendricks. County Commissioner District 2, Mike Kellums. County Commissioner District 3, Randy Novak. And finally, County Council Member at Large, Scott, Scotty Ford, Mike Mullenauer and Johnny Stimley. Have approved that.
The motion is certified, the 2024 primary election.
I second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
We just need to sign the back page of this one.
Just anywhere?
Yep.
Down here?
And it's exactly the same, I just highlighted yours.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to old business, David Whitfield Campaign Finance. Little background, he was, Taylor assessed a $1,000 fine, correct?
Correct.
And he emailed asking for leniency, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we reduce his fine to $200, consistent with the rest of them.
I second.
This is the guy that still is not paid his fine from last year. Didn't answer you, didn't appear. I'm a nay.
Oh, well, let me do the vote first, all in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Nay, alright, still a thousand.
Okay.
Has to be unanimous to end it. Uh, Board Member Comments. Teresa, would you like to start?
It was an interesting election. It was a long day, it was very educational for me, I look forward to the next one.
Um, I think that for me, let me, let me start where I wanted to start, um, and, and I've emailed these two about the anonymous mailer. Um, just to be very clear, I am not going to hear any part of that. Whatever these two decide to do with that, I trust them. Um, I won't have a vote in it, I won't hear it, I would, I would call on my proxy because I was named in it, so I just don't want to give a, a bad look. Um, but again, I, I trust these two to do whatever they're going to do. As far as the election goes, so I've been around, I've been around here since 2017 and this was probably the smoothest election I've ever seen. I was very nervous about the countywide vote centers for the first. the countywide vote centers for the first time. And I expected a ton of phone calls in the morning that we really didn't get. It was just so smooth, and I think that that goes to, to great poll workers, just good teamwork. Obviously, I, I'm going to continue to try to improve my, my training, but apparently we're getting better because there were fewer phone calls than anything I've ever seen, so that's awesome. So thanks to you guys, because you guys are a huge help.
It was a, it was a smooth election. We kept saying, you know, knock on wood, where's the, where's the issues? We haven't heard that many today, but looking forward to the general. As to all the various issues that we have going on right now, we'll get to it. Lot of investigations going on right now, so. I believe that is all I have to say about that. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.